Good morning. We will officially call this special meeting to order and first item on the agenda is public comment.
May I before we, may I, may I ask about the agenda? Because we have had several citizens, owners, write in about requesting discussion on not just rollback but rollout. And I will point out that this special meeting is only discussing rollback. If we want to have a discussion on rollout with no commitment or decision making, I think it would be up to this board to say so or defer it to a future meeting because it is a separate topic, but it's not on the agenda. So I leave it to the board to decide whether we want to allow discussion of rollout at this meeting, understanding there will be no decisions, or do we want to defer it.
Do we also have to make a motion to where the rules of order, if they have this, because as of now, the rules of order don't allow for this special meeting, we can do that. How great. That's no problem. But if you say, maybe we limit the topic.
I'm in agreement. I'd like to discuss.
You discuss both or you just?
I just had one, one comment. I had an appointment for 10 o'clock, however, I had to change that. But the best appointment I could get, and we're doing holidays and everything else, is noon time. I need to leave at 11:30 today.
I might suggest then that we defer, I mean, in the interest, it does get difficult that we specifically have a future, not too distant, meeting that we discuss rollout, which is a separate topic. And my second question would be whether the board would waive our standard rules that when we get to the discussion on rollback, that we would allow input from the public during discussion by recognition, hands up and recognition from the board? Or do we want to strictly limit to comment?
Yes, make a motion.
Okay.
Move it, read it.
I move that we allow input from the public during the rollback discussion upon recognition from the board.
Second. I have a motion and a second is for discussion.
It would be a suspension of rules, but yes.
Any more discussion?
No.
If I would say aye?
Aye.
If I would say no? And I have no idea how the legality that is, so I'm trusting that you guys know what you're doing on the procedure.
Would waive the rules of procedure for the initial discussion.
Okay. Make sure that's reflected in that at work.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to challenge on that, but anyway. All right. What do you want to do next?
Public comment.
Public comment. All right. Anybody in the folks want to speak? As the record showed, that one wanted to speak, number three on the agenda. Discussion and finalization of ordinance 18-16. Ms. Penn.
Okay, this ordinance and different draft forms have been out there for three or four months now. The latest inputs I received, Heather and I worked through them to include the ones that we felt were appropriate and that Noel also accepted. And there were, there were some that were really more rollback related and not actually ordinance related. So this now is the final proposed amended ordinance that has been through legal. The board has all had it now for a few days. If there are some additional comments or questions, I think that we can go through them. The point was to try to get everything well-defined and to make clear what is and isn't expected in terms of timing of rollout, storage of cans, et cetera, and what would be, what would be offenses against the ordinance, we tried to make that clear as well. So if any commissioners have some changes that they would like to propose or some questions, now's the time to address them. I'd like to be able to take this to the meeting tonight in a final version.
Yeah, I have four different things that you asked us to send your comments and I did.
And I included.
And I don't see them included.
We went through, you asked about why yard waste. Yard waste was a decision that was previously made by the board.
The incident yard waste?
Yeah, you did ask.
I've got the fourth incident I've got there.
Okay, keep going.
So the first one I, the first one I suggested was that when people have to have multiple cans, the alternate can, the second, fourth, sixth, eighth, could be a blue can.
We have discussed that at previous meetings and we decided not to do that. Because we decided not to do that.
I don't recall having decided that, but maybe I will sleep in the wheel. I'm getting a lot of feedback from people, if I have to have the second can and I, I have to have a brown one, I don't need it, even for the renters, they don't need it because almost everything that's extra, and my own at home is the same, it's the recyclable. That's the issue that takes up all the volume. So I don't see the, and it's actually cheaper for the homeowners to have a blue can than just to buy a brown can from Waste Industries, about $25 cheaper. And that's even under the new rules of multiple pickups in the summer. So I don't see the reason that we couldn't allow people to have the second, fourth, and sixth can be a blue can to take recyclables. It's not forcing anybody to do anything that gives them the option to rent, have two brown cans, have a brown, a blue.
The problem we run into is people, okay, you can put recyclable in a black bin, you cannot put trash in a blue bin. But I see over the summer, an awful lot of people using blue bins for some of everything. So it's a difficult, if you're saying, I have two bins, one's recycle, one is what I call wet waste, a renter, when they run out of brown, black bin, wet waste room, they're just going to throw the bags into the blue bin and then that becomes a mixed waste that doesn't get picked up. I'm, and again, at the moment, we're saying, you know, let's see how this works, but I think that four, at four-bedroom houses that need two bins, six-bedroom houses that need three bins, it's not just the bedrooms that people are sleeping in, we've all acknowledged that, you have a lot of refuse at times, wet waste in addition. And I think that, I think that trying to have a blue bin when we do have overflowing wet waste in a lot of cases is probably asking for trouble.
Well, my own observation from the years I've been here is that the extra stuff that's out there is bags of bottles and cans from the summer program. And I rented my house and also sat there while people rented, consistent, I didn't see any wet garbage in cans sitting out front, but I do see a lot of cans and bottles and trash and cardboard and things like that. I just got.
The other thing is that it would encourage recycling as well, right?
It would without requiring.
And I understand there's a.
Without requiring.
But I think it's worth it.
We could even say you have to, the first two have to be brown, so after that, every other one can be a blue.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
Well, let me go through the four things. The other was under B, we say that commercial establishments need adequate number of refuse containers. I'm not sure what that means, I have no idea how we would enforce that.
That's, you know, this is, I'm going to say, this is, this is total carryover language. Town manager, how, how do you know how commercial determines how much refuse capacity they have?
The restaurants and commercial enterprises here have basically dumpsters, and you know, that's, that's not been a problem with their dumpsters overflowing. It hasn't been brought to, you know, our attention that that's a.
And you wouldn't know it because all those commercial dumpsters are required to be screened. So you probably don't even know where they're at. So overflow gets in.
Yeah, I noticed that the ice restaurant out here, they have bags and bags of stuff out with one or two cans, and they'll have four, five, or six bags banged up out there. They don't have enough, and I don't know how you judge it. A 10-seat restaurant versus a 100-seat restaurant could have the same amount, just who decides what's adequate for it. Unless you say, if you, if you don't put it in cans and you just drop it on the ground, we're going to punish you. That would enforce it. So let me, let me do the other two. Under D, we say containers for the town property are for general use of residents and visitors using the public areas. It's unlawful for anyone else to place commercial or residential waste. I don't know who else that could be.
If a homeowner runs out of room and decides to run down and dump their garbage into the common area bins.
A homeowner's a resident, they have a right to do it.
No, it's, it's, it's to throw trash that you're generating when you're in that area. It's not.
Well, I understand what you, but that's not what this says. This says you can use it, residents can use it, the general use of residents and visitors.
Using when using the public areas. Use of residents and visitors using the public areas.
Oh, somebody, those two residents and then visitors using the public areas.
So it's, it's when they're using the public areas, it's for the trash they generate when they're there. I, I understand, but I think it is, it does state what it's meant to.
The other big, most important one is under 50.06 yard waste, those so effect will be asked to correct the situation so they come into compliance with the code or receive a civil fine of $50 per day per offense. I'm, I'm of the understanding the state statute limits us to $50 per incident, but did that violate the state statute?
Again, our town attorney actually was the one who, when it came to this, said that a fine of $50 per day would be allowable and would probably be appropriate to discourage the leaving piles of yard waste and whatever at the road for weeks and weeks on end. So again, our town attorney, she, she, she actually proposed that.
The bottom of the page, civil in accordance with 1099B, the civil fine for violation of any provision of this chapter is $50 per offense. How can you have both?
I looked at the $50 and it's every day.
It says that, that section, there's part of that section and there's someone that says that every day is a separate offense.
Separate offense.
Yeah, it's somewhere in there, I'll have to go find it, but it does, in the penalty section of our ordinance book, it says that every day that it happens is considered a separate offense. It's already in the language somewhere, I'll have to go find it.
It's in B subdivision, B or C.
Well, I think, having been an owner living in Europe, and we did have owners that are on vacation and gone and not even always reachable, that I could leave here and one month, six months later come back and have six months worth of penalty at $50 a day. See, but to me, that's just, $50 a day, when we got, most of our owners don't live here and so they come for a weekend and they go back and my national member's not going to be back till March or April. And if he had left something out, he'd get 1,500 bucks a month for five months? I'm not sure that we want to deal with that, but those are mine, I just reflect that those are issues that I thought I had with the current.
And again, I would say, our intent is not to create a revenue stream from fines. Our attempt is in the first month to really try to educate. And again, draw, drive the island right now, and there are some homes where there are heaps of yard waste that we don't have another pickup this year now, okay? It's going to sit there till March. Okay, there, if we pass this starting in January, we can use the time to issue a warning, a however we're going to educate, but those should not be here. And if someone is going to go away for an extended period of time, they should leave their property in good state. If it's going to be a trash can, if we have rollback, it'll get rolled back. Yard waste, frankly, I think yard waste in some areas is out of control the length of time that the crap is just sitting there.
Well, it's not just, yeah, it's not just that, it's the fact that more, the majority of people do not prepare the trash for pickup.
Correct.
It's an easy, it's really easy just to wrap it in bundles and put it in a bag, but people don't do it.
Again, it'll be about education again, but I don't think that, I don't think that we should look at this as there's going to be an occasional person who goes away for a long period of time and comes back to something huge, because we'll have ways of handling something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. How flexible are we on, and who enforces it, how flexible are we on?
Well, the enforcement will be something that will have to be gone through, but I find it hard to believe that the town, after repeated attempts, if they found out that somebody was really out of commission for a long period of time, couldn't show leniency.
Generally speaking, we strive for compliance first, whether that begins with a phone call before we go through a more formal process. Generally speaking, there are exceptions to that.
Yeah, we used our letters, every one of our letters, Bull Kids had the same thing, but it was five of them all today. And the way we handled those was, we send out a letter telling you, you have 15 days to contact us with your, with what your starting action is going to be, and then we, what we do is we follow up, you start your action within 15 days, we follow up and make sure you have, you know, we put that in the system and kicks it back out to us and says, hey, you need to go check. And then if they don't do it at that point in time, then we usually, you know, send them another letter telling them that there's going to be action started within 90 days. And so depending on what it is, if it's a whole bunch of trash, you know what I mean? But for trash containers, just about everybody gets involved in that, but the first thing that we do when we notice there's not enough trash cans, we start calling the management agencies, because they have direct line to them. And we do the same thing for the trash. If we see trash rolling out, riding down the road, we usually get ahold of, if it's a rental, we get all the rental companies, they contact them. But we have ways of finding them. I mean, we've found people in Georgia and back lots that are double stamped and readdressed that, we can find you.
Okay, good, good, thanks.
So I think the outstanding point is, is John's request that we somehow, at some stage of the number of cans, allow a blue can to replace a wet waste bin, a black, a black bin. The proposal was made that after two cans, you could then have a blue bin instead of a black bin. And if I understood right, if you then get even higher, if you got to the five bin, you would say.
Third, fifth, seventh, something like that.
So.
That's just, I think that would work and give everybody an option of being compliant with recycling, but not force them to do it. And it would keep us from putting recyclable stuff in the solid waste cans that shouldn't be there.
Do I hear a motion, then?
Can I add a comment for y'all's consideration? I'm sure you've read your packages and just want to point out, make sure that everybody's cognizant of the fact that Waste Industries is adding a surcharge onto the recycling annual fee, it's $14.52 seventy years, so that's going to drive that price up. And I haven't done the back of the napkin calculation, but in terms of recycled pickups, is it a, do we know that it's a one-for-one volumetric trade-off of a black can for a blue can on an annual basis? Since we just changed the frequency on that, I think that when we had done that before, basically on an annual basis, a blue can was a half of a black can on an annual basis. So in terms of meeting the, and we can do that math quickly, in terms of, of the intent of the ordinance, and, and I just offered this up, that I think that a blue can swap out is not going to be a one-for-one trade-off, it's just something, I wanted to add to, bring your attention.
Money-wise?
No, I'm talking about on a, on an annual basis, a 90-gallon recycle can is not going to get you the same amount of trash off the island that a black can does because the number of pickups per year is less.
Yeah, remember, John, we are not.
We're out of rental season by that time.
Well, okay, this is one issue that we all have to think through because although we do pick up from mid-May until the end of September, we'll be doing weekly pickups. That still leaves a six months, a good six months of the year, and there is still a lot of activity in April, the first half of May, and October, and even out to some weeks in November with Thanksgiving. So at that point in time, you're only getting every other week pickup on the, on the blue bins. So, you know, if, if you have an eight-bedroom house and they're supposed to have four bins, they're really only going to have three bins for waste outside of season, weekly, for weekly pickup. And that is a consideration. So if there's a motion, we can go through all the discussion and things, but you know, it's.
So I move that we amend this for just to allow a blue can to replace a brown can on the third, fifth, and seventh can requirement.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion?
I think that having it on the third, fifth, and seventh, I can, I'm concerned that somebody would decide that the third and fifth will be recycle and one, two, three then will be waste. And then again, you get into the off-season, but there's still activity and they really only have three waste bins that get picked up weekly. I, I think I am more open to the idea of one black, after two black bins, one black bin can be substituted with a blue bin and see how that goes.
Are you saying anything different?
Yeah, just, just if you need, if you need.
You're just saying the one, just the one.
Only one, only one, not, yeah, one of them can be.
Good start.
We could try it for a while.
I would think that if we're talking about a home that would require three or four black bins, they would also generate a heck of a lot more recyclable. So if you need that many black bins, you actually need more than one blue bin. What we're trying to do here, I mean, what we're trying to do here is juggle and try to make the most people, I don't want to say happy, but service the most people in the best way possible. And I don't think we'll know which way is the best way until we try it for a year. So we can discuss it forever, but we're not going to come up with a perfect solution. So why don't we just try to get what we think is the best for the majority of people? And I mean, like a common sense approach, if you need, if you need four, is one blue actually going to make up and, and serve the purpose? It may serve the purpose of a limited amount of recyclables, but it's not going to take care of.
No, but I think most of the, I think we'd all accept most of the garbage is recyclable. My own at home, my own, there's just two of us at home and it's every single time. I got a fourth of a can of black every week, and I've got a half of a can of recyclable every week.
Does Waste Industries have any idea what the percentage is for us all?
Well, their problem is a lot of recyclable goes into the black can.
I know, but do they have an idea? I mean, you'd think they.
Well, the other problem.
They're in the business.
The other problem we have too, that you can only recycle now number one and number two. Which means a lot of the stuff that used to go in the can no longer goes into a blue can.
It's cans and bottles, really. It's, it's trying to capture cans and bottles.
And cardboard, right.
And to some extent cardboard, although renters don't usually have.
Actually, a lot of them have stuff shipped here for oxygen stuff and, but bottles and cans, and they do produce a lot of bottles and cans in the summer.
So I get the, the number of this question is, do we go with your proposal of you can alternate, or you can substitute the blue can as many times as you would like, or are we going to limit the substitution of the blue can?
Well, I understand, I'm, I'm more than happy to, let's try for you with more. So after you have two brown cans, you can substitute one type of blue for a brown.
Then would you like to withdraw the motion or restate the motion?
I'll withdraw the motion. I move.
Yes.
The person that seconded the motion, do you agree with that?
I agree.
All right, back to you.
I move that we amend the ordinance to allow the third can to be a blue can.
I'll second that.
Third can, blue.
Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody understand? All right. Any more discussion?
Can you go through that one more time, so I understand?
Yeah, the third, the third can, the third required can can be a blue can.
Okay, so in the context of the text as it reads now, one in two bedrooms, you've got to have one trash can. Three to four bedrooms is two trash cans. Five to six bedrooms, you have to have three trash cans.
And the third one should be blue.
The third one for five and six can be blue. The rest of that sentence reads and the like. So from, it's what we're saying is that for seven and eight bedrooms, you would have four trash cans and one recycle, you know, where.
Yes, yeah. As of now, the board would only allow one blue can to replace a brown can, a black can.
But only after two black cans. So in other words, this would not affect a two or a three-bedroom home, it would only affect four, four, four bedroom homes and above, right?
Probably five.
Five bedroom homes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So after two black cans, you're going to have a maximum of one blue can?
Yeah, they have substitute.
Well, you can hire, you can buy more blues on your own.
And I think it's important to note that where this is a requirement for waste containers that related to the subscription methodology, you're provided an option of having a subscription to meet a mandatory requirement. Okay?
Are you ready to vote? Call in favor, say aye. If I would say no. Madam Clerk, vote as you may.
So a question for the clerk, this is on the agenda for tonight?
We're voting just to make that change in here.
Is that, it'll, it'll be changed for consideration tonight?
It will be changed for consideration tonight.
Right.
That, that will then become, this is our proposed amended ordinance.
Right. Okay. I think the question, we're not voting on the whole ordinance.
No, we are voting, we are voting to adopt. Yeah, we're voting to adopt tonight.
Anything else, ma'am?
If no one has any other changes, then we can move on to.
I, I would ask that we consult with the town attorney because a number of violations here are both criminal and civil. And it just seems to me that a criminal offense for not rolling back your trash can or putting trash on, is a little bit beyond. I understand, but there's a difference between it being normal language and being necessary language. And if it's not necessary, I would, I would ask that we remove the criminal penalties from this and just have civil penalties.
We can ask her tonight. I, I know that Kujner Frere asked her at the last meeting and she said that this was not unusual or unacceptable, but it can be requested. If there's no harm, if there's no harm removing it to make it simple.
Yeah, my question is just, add both and then what was it, they, you know, the intent?
I have a question for David, and I'm, we've probably asked it before, but what are we allowed to, what do you say, civil penalty? Can we assess a civil penalty and get it paid right away? Or are we limited on what we can put in the bill, or can we issue a bill to the people? Or what are the restrictions you have on what you can, what civil penalty you can assess to people?
That's an old question.
Legal question.
We'll give Noel a heads up, though. We'll give Noel a heads up though, before the night, before she gets answered or asked or asked.
Before we close that out, I have a really basic question though. It, I don't, because of that, the ordinance that we're discussing, it does have roll out, I mean, roll back in it. So I'm, I'm kind of, I don't understand how we can vote this ordinance in and not decide on a roll back.
That is the whole point of saying we must make a decision on roll back because if we don't have a roll back decision that gives a level playing field to all owners, then there is no reason for us to change the ordinance to make something enforceable. So we need to take a decision on roll back.
Before we finalize this order?
Well, at the same time, at least. They are, they are hand in hand. They are hand in hand.
I just want to make sure that everyone's thinking the same way.
We're not deciding now, we're not voting, we're just deciding might we propose that, right?
Tonight, tonight should be when we propose to vote. And at the same time, we should be giving our decision on roll back.
Which is what we're proposing.
Yes. So I laid out a number of possibilities on roll back. I have said, in no way am I saying this is the only, these are the only options. You can come up with a lot of different permutations, but I've tried to come up with what I felt were some of the topics, some of the options that have been kicked around over time. Keep it as it is, where it's an uneven playing field for roll back. And that's a case where changing the ordinance doesn't make sense because it's not a level field. Do no roll back service. And the problem we've faced with that is we're all worried about what it's going to look like, is this is trying to shake, as it's trying to shake out and will it ever get to the stage that we wanted? For B part to pay for Whole Island Tuesdays, Saturdays only during season, the problem as we've discussed is there's a lot of rental activity outside of season. And we have our second homeowners as well to take into account that don't rent. And then there's the Whole Island, basically all Tuesdays and Saturdays during season, which is every pickup. And then there's different ways of handling that payment. I've had a lot of citizens over the past year say that they believe it either has to be nothing or Whole Island, and I tend to agree that that's what's fair. Having Whole Island arranged can be, the town pays for it. There's a combined payment of the town using B part and general fund, which again is a town cost increase. Pay for it all out of B part or combine B part and fees to break even. Those are the, the ones that came to my mind right away. And when we're going to discuss break even, break even will have to include the cost of the service as well as the cost of enforcement because I would expect in the first year, as everybody's getting used to this, it would probably be the time where there would be the most need to be out there policing it, to get people kind of into the rhythm of how this is supposed to work.
Roll back or putting out?
Roll back.
But we're rolling it back.
Well, it's still, the rollout has specific terms. We're not, we're not, we are not allowing...
Right, I understand that.
And then also, it's the, it's the trying to get people to stop putting extra bags of trash out at the curb, which last summer was happening more and more. I was surprised at how often there were trash bags by the curb compared to previous years. And we're hoping that by identifying the properties that didn't have enough waste bins, that this does help take care of it. We'll know after the first year if it does or not. But, but last summer was really trashy in terms of extra bags and just, just overall, overall, the whole situation. So I've, I've laid it out. I don't really want to give my opinion first. I would basically now like to leave it to other commissioners, to the mayor. Again, if members of the audience want to be involved in discussion, raise your hand and we can recognize you as we're going through this.
Could I, did I have a comment?
Yeah.
I, I would suggest that we have a, 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 B, C, D would be fee only.
It's, it's, it's an option. Fee only is an option, which is no town participation, fee only.
No, no...
No town payment.
Hang on, hang on.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
He doesn't want to use B part, he just wants B only.
To me, the question before that is, do we want the town to pay? It's going to be paid for. Either the people pay for it or the town does.
Yeah, but the options here, it's not just the...
Understand, but how much fund is a different issue.
Yeah, but that's here and for...
The town uses the B part to pay a lot of its operational expenses as it's intended.
Well, my, and my other question related to that is, how much do we pay now to have the current sit on a roll back?
Do you remember?
Wasn't it thirty?
I want to say thirty-five. I, I'll need a check.
Thirty-five thousand?
Okay.
Then, then David, the note that you sent us with the eighty-five thousand dollar price head approximation, what does that entail?
Let's have all cans down at the curb, back to the house.
Tuesdays and Saturdays.
For, for the whole season, for the whole year?
Annually, that's all, that's all year long, all cans back to the house.
I think one of the things that we have to educate people about is, I get these comments, well, the town should pay for that. Shouldn't get it, but the town's paying with their money. So no matter, you know, it's just easier for the town to pay something than to send out bills to everybody and, and try to track...
Well, I view it, and, and, you know, half this country believes that, you know, the town, you know, only grows on trees. But you, it, I, I view it as an option, just like recycling. You pay for a yearly fee and you come and pay for it a year and you give that service. I, I think...
But in this case, if we require it, probably the town should pay.
There is no, there is no, yeah, so that's why I think, that's why I say fee only, so it's optional. That's why I added that in, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I wouldn't use it. I don't think anybody sitting on this board would, would use it. And why should I pay for it? It's an option, so it should be a fee.
I don't, I don't know that the person who gave the bid is thinking in terms of there are opt-out people because that adds a level of complexity in...
Sure.
Okay, so that, that is, this has been assuming that we're not going to give an opt-out because of that, but be, and I'm with you. I won't use this, but you know, I'm willing to spend a certain amount of money a year to try and keep the island clean and neat and healthy.
Sure.
And, and I would just say that some of the correspondence we got points out that we're going to make decisions on people who have no right to decide on us, right? Then, I don't agree with them, but they believe they're disenfranchised because they don't live here and they can't vote on the issues. And to take the position that the five of us would be affected by it, that doesn't sit well. I, I would look at it more like paying, I pay taxes to go to, for children to go to school, but I have no children that go to school anymore. And so then by increasing the pickup and having the trash cans taken off the street, it actually benefits all of us because it's a more attractive community. People would be more likely to perhaps want to buy a home here. And when I just did the quick math in my head, if it's only costs eighty-five thousand dollars a year, what costs a homeowner four, four dollars a month? That's not, that's not...
And that's if you do a flat fee.
That, that's not a terrible, I mean, roughly we have twenty-four hundred, so it's actually a little bit less than four, four dollars per month for home. So when we're considering the different options, I don't think any decision we come down with is going to have a terrible impact on someone.
And it significantly simplifies the process.
Yeah.
So would you take over by the roll everyone back?
Yeah, yeah, that's... Fair enough. But are we, are we able to talk about rollout?
I, I, I'd rather, no, we can't talk about rollout. I'd rather David was back to hear all the rollout is, I, I would state that rollout becomes more complicated because if, if someone says, I'll do rollout, people keep their cans in all different places, okay? I mean, I keep mine under my stairs. They're not visible. Some people keep them in the back of their property where they're not visible, okay? Really behind everything where it's not visible. So rollout becomes the, the contractor would need to know where everybody's canceled, okay? And that is not, we don't have a standardize. Right now, we're saying it's going to be under or alongside your house. My own opinion is, I think it would be good if there were some providers of rollout, that people could contract with them. But I think there's a tremendous amount of complication and some legal issues about, you know, hunting around somebody's property that I'm not sure we as the town want to get involved in. David did check with Waste Industries, by the way, about if you are handicapped, elderly and incapable of doing rollout and rollback. Waste Industries doesn't publicize it, but for residents who do have disabilities, there is a program that they can enroll in that they're, the Waste Industries will roll out and rollback for residents. You know, so, but that is not going to apply to second homeowners or to rented properties.
We've budgeted thirty-five thousand, it's a little bit under that.
And, and we've been paying that, that amount roughly for the past X years.
Couple.
Couple of years out of B part. It is an eligible B part expense, remember? We did go through that, so...
So that, that would go to eighty-five thousand, that's, is that an estimate on your part or is that somebody, the person that's doing it, who's done it currently?
That's a working estimate.
Okay.
Is that big enough to have to go out for bids or not?
I would insist that we develop a statement of work and, and accept bids on it.
See, I've, I've, I've been pretty quiet and I'd like to listen to everybody and that, but I just have a couple of comments. The, we received obviously, and I think Mike and I had a, had a discussion before the meeting started, that we certainly appreciated all the correspondence that we've been receiving and, and feedback, only which we probably could get a little bit more. And I'd like to also thank Pat for taking this project on, which is an extremely difficult project, even from a rollout and a rollback perspective and that. And it's very complex, there's a lot of issues and there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to be discussed here. I'd also like to thank the Holden Beach Property Owners Association for taking it on and sending a re-mail out to the property owners. And as a result of that, we got some more feedback and that, which is, which is really great. One thing that I had my eye open to, my eyes open to is that, you know, I think of, of people that own homes here, and there's roughly about eighty percent of the population that we have, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's higher, I don't know, that people that, that either rent their houses or come and enjoy the beauty of the island, could be for a weekend, it could be for three months, it could be for six months, as some of the emails indicate to me and that, but, but there's so many varieties of people, oh my God, you know, and that. And people are accustomed to, and, you know, it resulted in years and years of this that when they come for the weekend, they roll their can out and their can is there. Whether it's on Saturday night, Sunday night, Monday, whatever, you know, the can is there until Tuesday in the wintertime that the trash collection takes, takes place. I certainly support a rollback program for numerous reasons and that. But I am also concerned about those folks that are not here. I am concerned about the containers being located at street side, you know, earlier than six P M. How we're going to, how we're going to accomplish that, what the expectation is for people that aren't here, that roll the can out on Saturday or Sunday. And I think we have to get over that hurdle and determine exactly what you recommend pertaining to that. I mean, it, it's easy to say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to have a program in place and we're looking for enforcement and we're going to enforce this and that. But I guess I'm a people person, I'm more concerned about my, my expectation. And if I was one of those folks that, that come here, whether it's on the weekend or whether it's I'm here for three months, whatever it is, I'm concerned about, you know, are we going to provide some help to them or are we just going to lower a hammer on these people and that? And so I want to do what's fair for everybody pertaining to this six P M requirement. And my women who look at garbage cans on Saturday or Sunday that are, that are full, I might consider that because trash collection is on a Tuesday. Tuesday rolls around, rollback occurs, and I don't see trash cans until the following weekend when people are here for the weekend. And, but these are full trash cans and they're not going to blow around in the wind. So I, I just, what's on my mind, I want to say, I want to get it out and that. So again, I am concerned about the part-time people, I refer to them as part-time people. A lot of the people that rent their homes and a lot of the property owner, the property management groups that we have here, such as Winding River or such as your own group, Pat, you know, we have our own covenants. And within our covenants, it specifically states that you can only put your can out at a certain time and you have to roll your can back by a certain time and that. But that's only a limited number, you know, of people here on the island. So I'd like to have a little bit more discussion on this requirement to have cans out there.
Can I ask a question? What did you just said? How, how does it work then in your Winding River community with, with people? Aren't there people who rent their homes and aren't there people who only come down occasionally that split you? How, how does that work then? Is, is, do people comply, how do they comply with that? You're, you're like a microcosm of what they're trying to do, so I want to find out how it works.
Great point. My neighbor that lives alongside me, he rents his house. And we kind of look out for him. He also, right, puts in the rental agreement that it's the renters' responsibility to make sure that when they check in on Saturday, that that can is rolled back. And by dusk, by six o'clock at night, that can goes back in, or cans go back in. Same thing with rollout, that it's the renters' responsibility to do that. And they sign a rental agreement, you know, in accordance with that. All right? If there's a non-compliance, Winding River has a security group that comes through about eleven o'clock at night. And if there's a garbage can that's, that's still out, they take a picture of it, it goes to the property management group, them and turn that owner, whether it's a full-time, whether it's a renter, a person that rents their house, they receive a A letter from Winding River that they're in violation of the covenants. If it continues the second offense, then they're requested to go to the, to have a meeting. And if they don't show up for the meeting, then they're fined. If they don't pay their fine, then we put a lien against their house.
Okay.
So it's pretty strict.
But what, again, when I, when I look into penalizing people, how do you find the compliance, voluntary compliance is? Is it, you know, very good, half, half so, or...
It, it, it really truly works when you get to the lien stage.
Okay.
Joe, one of the things, I mean, I was a second homeowner before I moved here, okay? I owned a house and I was, I, we did not rent our house. And I was lucky because I was on Ocean Boulevard so that I would get rollback. However, I used the house a lot. And I would come from Raleigh on Friday and I would roll my trash out from a previous weekend and it'd get picked up on Saturday. And we didn't generate enough trash on the weekend to weight the can down because our worry was I'd win. So I would just leave it back there under the house with a rock on it so it wouldn't blow open. And the next time I would come on a Friday, this is during season, I would roll it out on Saturday. I typically didn't do rollout when I left Sunday during season. And if I felt that, you know, it was going to be a while before I was there again, I actually at times took a bag of trash home with me. We have put in here for off-season that there is a forty-eight hour window so that people who are coming in for the weekend... who are coming in for the weekend and leaving on Sunday can roll their can out on Sunday. That's going to be legal. So that's trying to accommodate the, you know, like I'm here, I'm not a renter, I am here, I want to use my property, pickups not till Tuesday. So we've tried to accommodate that by the wording in the, in the ordinance, giving forty-eight hours at that time period. It takes some planning, but for five years, I plan. I, I dealt with it, I planned so that my trash would get picked up. It's, it's, I, I understand it's not perfect, but again, we just had way too many cases of trash sitting out there for a week, blue cans sitting out there for ten to twelve days and they are getting tipped over and they are blowing over. So I, I don't know how to better do it than to give that different window in off-season, but it does mean you can leave for the week, you can leave at the end of the weekend and you're not in violation.
My, my observation while I was living at five fifteen was that a major issue is that the renters are told you have to have your trash cans out by six o'clock on Saturday morning. Well, they're left by six. They're not getting up at four o'clock to put it out. They wait till they've checked out of their house and cleaned it up and the garbage is gone. And so full cans are sitting out there Saturday morning, the new guys come in, they got no place to put trash in their cans because the cans are full. But my thought was we should have said you have to have it out by the night before. You must have it out the night before, not by the morning, the minute the truck's going to be there. And I, I did it myself. Last night I had my trash out after six o'clock and if I needed it, and I did, I had dog food, I, so I got rid of it in the dark, in the dark, but that made sure that it was out there for early pickup. I didn't want to risk the chance of it not getting picked up. Probably renters should have the same thing. They have to have it the night before and if they want to take more garbage out the next morning, instead of under the house, go out to the street and put it in the garbage can. And that would, that would avoid, if they would do that, that would avoid having full cans sitting out there, being put out there after the trash cans were picked up.
Well, in any event, if the trash cans do get put down after the trash people have gone by, the new rollback is going to be both empty and full bins.
Right. The problem is that you renters don't have...
But then, then they should contact the rental management company. It's not that it's going to be sitting down at the road for several days and in addition, they still have to ask the rental management company, where am I supposed to put my trash?
I, I agree with that. The actual event was that we just bag it and put it downstairs in a bag and the raccoons would come in terribly open and whatever.
Could I ask a question, David? Is, is that the agreement now full or empty?
That's what the bid's about.
No, no, no. Current time, current.
Not currently, no.
Full.
But we discussed this earlier this year and we agreed it needs to be all bins go back.
Public.
Street is clear.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Okay. But then, you know, then we have the other issues, obviously, is when they roll it back full.
I know that the rental management companies do have instructions that encourage the renters to put the bins down the night before. They just don't all do it, particularly on Saturday. And it's an on, I, you know, again, I, I don't know how we can do anything more than the rental companies are doing, trying to educate them, but the fact is, if the cans all go back up against the house or under the house, I am assuming if a vendor comes in and finds we have no bin space, they will call their rental management company and say, "You gotta come and do something here."
So, so Mr. Mayor, in conjunction with that, if somebody rents a home and the dresser isn't working or whatever, you have to send somebody to do a little work, there's a fee involved in that, correct? In, in certain instances, not in all instances, there's something has to be done, there's some kind of fee involved and then the owner gets that in their bill, right? So how much of a problem would it be for a rental agency, because I don't see any other rental agencies here, although this is probably an important issue for them, but nobody's here to help. So if I, if I rent a home and I don't do what I'm supposed to do and then shows up afterwards and the trash cans are full, his week, their fault, and he calls you up and you have to send somebody to remove the trash, is there a way that that can be retained from? So there's two options. You can either bill the owner saying, "I, I had to come here because Sullivan didn't do what he was supposed to do," or you can hold some of Sullivan's deposit. It, one, is it legal for you to retain part of the deposit when you know that I caused the expense? And two, how much, how much of a pain in the neck would that be for you as the rental management company?
Uh, here's the real world. That's what I want to hear. To my knowledge, well, first of all, my company has a dump truck and most check-in nowadays, I pay my people to be available with that dump truck. So when this problem comes up, not in all cases, because we have often piles of trash left by the road at the last minute, we may or may not know about. But on most check-in nowadays, I have people that I pay and I furnish the truck and we go pick it up and haul the excess away. To my knowledge, I don't ever recall charging a renter and to my knowledge, I don't ever recall charging a homeowner. I don't charge the homeowner because, Alan, you're the mayor, why don't you get straightened out where you take my tax money and take care of this problem? So I get the blame for it that way. If I charge the renter, well, I pay eight thousand dollars a week and you tell me because I came and saved a house, rented through you because the town's so sorry they can't haul the trash off now, you want me to pay to haul my trash off? So the bottom line is I don't charge the homeowner, I don't charge the rent because one or both of them are going to be mad with me either way. So it's better for me to just pay and that's the way I handle it.
Okay.
So I would love it all term.
Do you have a sort of estimate of what percent of your properties in an average, you know, just rolling sort of, what percent of your properties you end up having to do trash removal?
Well, one house might have one bag laying out by the road. The next house might have a cubic yard trash laid by the road. There's nothing consistent about it. But if I had to give swag of how many houses we have to accommodate to some level of service on a check-in day, I'd say we probably average a dozen, maybe, maybe a dozen and a half.
But you've got four, five hundred houses you manage, right?
Three hundred plus, yeah.
Three hundred plus, so that's less than four percent.
Yeah. There's essentially, David, you can help me here, but there's essentially twenty-two hundred houses plus or minus.
I was just using you as the example.
So one out of every seven houses on the island, I have at least some kind of management And like Tom was saying a minute ago, bags on the ground during the night, the possums and the raccoons and the foxes and the coyotes.
And the bobcats.
And the bobcats. Look at that as an opportunity.
That's a bad thing. The fox are waiting for it right now.
And what, what really, what really aggravates my staff is whenever the animals get in overnight and then we have to go down there and rake it up and pick it up and if the wind blew that night, then it's even more complicated because the neighbors called off, just giving me hayties about it because it was my renters that caused it to happen. So all that is worth. I want to get the pay and fees, tipping, tipping fees.
Yeah, so you have to pay the tipping fees as well. It's, it's just, it never ends, I know.
All right. Well, that's where rollout would alleviate that, that issue. So I, I think what John's saying is, I see more than four percent, I guess, but I think what happens, you, you have to be out by ten A M., you are rushing getting everything together, so at nine thirty, nine forty-five, you're filling the trash can and rolling it out. And guess what? Trash already went.
Yeah, check out from area of ten o'clock and these people haven't left early because they've got a long drive because they're checking out at the last minute. Then they're gonna have to trash out until the last minute.
Yep, they roll it out Saturday, ten A M. and it's there until Tuesday morning.
Well, with rollback, it will be up at the top of the house. Those full bins will be up at the house. They will not be at the road.
Right, and there won't be trash.
Different, different issue, but I mean, I, I would just ask the question, how does, whatever we put in the ordinance, it's still the behavior of the renter who probably leaves the trash can under the house until they're ready to leave because they're taking out their trash. So whether we put it that, yeah, you're supposed to have it out at six o'clock at night or you're supposed to have it out prior to six o'clock in the morning, it's really more the information that they get in their rental packet.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to spur the discussion of rollout as well as rollback.
Again, I, rollout to me is something that is involuntary. That would be something I would say that, that either owners or through their rental management company for the, for the rental properties, contract with a provider independent of the rollback of the town. I, again, this becomes a complication of, I can't see that the provider is just going to say, "Oh, I'll learn where everybody's trash is kept" and they're going to be crawling around everybody's property to find where the bins are to roll them out. There's probably going to be a standardization of your bins have to be in full view either, blah, 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 blah. This, this is getting way beyond what, what we provide as a rollback.
So, so rollback, we, what, what's rollback then? We just roll it where?
Well, right, right now, they roll it, I mean, my house, if I don't catch it before, and it's not often that I don't catch it first, they roll it back to the edge of my concrete pad, okay? It's not put back where I keep my trash can under the stairs. It's rolled back right on the edge of my concrete pad. I would actually say if people want to build a corral next to their house, because it's by the house or under the house, to keep, to keep their cans in and it's obvious where they would go, the rollback would be easy, but I don't expect rollback to be searching around where I keep my bins, but they roll it back to my concrete pad.
Where's, where's rollback now on the West, on, on the Boulevard?
Ocean Boulevard.
How far do they roll the cans back?
If they have, sometime, if there's a corral.
Back to, back to.
If there's a...
It's always, it's always a way of...
Or if there's a corral, one of those weird corrals that can be anyplace, they'll stuff it back in the corral. Otherwise, they put it basically on your concrete pad. They roll it back.
It's under the houses if the house is raised and there's an opening.
Yeah, do we need to clarify that at all?
Well, that would be the word, that would be under the contract. But again, you know, it's, it's, it's not in the driveway, it's not at the end of the road, it's back.
Yeah, I think a big part of it is if you're rolling back full, then you've kind of took the first step as far as not rolling out, you know, you got it off the street full.
Yeah.
Then, then there's another problem, it's, you know, the next time around, you've got twice as much trash and what to do with it, then, you know.
But again, I'm assuming these are rental properties and a, a new group coming in is going to call the management company and say, "I have no place to put my trash, you gotta come and give me something."
Would it, would it be, who must Pat to change, maybe that containers will be located at, at street side, you know, earlier than six P M.? Just say containers will be located at street side the evening before the designated collection day?
Um, you're back on the ordinance. We already moved on to rollback options.
Well, it's in the, rollback is in the...
I'm trying to resolve the problem.
Um, we said six P M. because it's sort of that time where it starts to cool off and define evening. Six P M. is just, not everybody thinks six P M. is, is the start of the evening. Six P M.'s, I'm not saying people are going to roll it, roll it out at five o'clock and we're going to go, "We got you," but I don't, I, I think we would all prefer not to have it rolled out at eight o'clock Friday morning and by Friday noon in July, it's, it's, it's...
Maybe, maybe my, I'm just, I'm just trying to resolve the issue of whole trash cans not being picked up, indicating that they must be rolled out the evening before.
We can say that, but again, again, I, if you're looking at what you're trying to enforce, we're trying to enforce that people are not putting them out to sit Thursday, all day Friday and things. We're not going to come out at midnight and make sure that every house has rolled their can out. So we're trying to set, you see, it, it becomes the, what you, yeah, we want people to put them out the night before and I think that's the rental management company message is, please put your cans out before you go to bed. Put your cans out before you go to bed.
I think that goes to back, what I, what I was saying before, no matter what we put in, in this, that whether it's by six o'clock or the evening, means, no difference to me which we, but it's the behavior of the renter that we're trying to build and nobody, no renter is reading my statute, so it's really the information that they get from the rental agency or what we can put on our website in case they happen to look at that, but it's really just a modification of behavior rather than the wording itself.
Alan, how, how many rental agencies do we have that, that drive the town?
Um, there are, there's one that operates on the mainland, Mead Coastal, Rundberg Land or Hodor Beach, whatever they, uh, and, uh...
Hogs.
And Hogs.
So we probably have a meeting with each, each of those, somebody, one of, or, or have a meeting with each of those to ask what they can do to improve this. They could have a big impact because if they're not doing it now, they could have a big impact. Could be a major issue when new renters come in, that's one of the major things they've got to talk about is how to deal with the trash. But we, the house of Alan Olden that's right next door to me, every time renters come in, I go to them and I tell them, and they had no clue what it was about. I said, so, and they still, I go out on Saturday morning or Tuesday morning, I, I take their cans to the street and I take them back and it's just to keep the neighborhood clean. But they, they're good people, they just, it's not what they're here for, they're here to vacation and I'm not thinking about that. But the, the rental people could help probably and relieve their issues as well.
Um, I, I'm, okay, I know that Joe has to leave eleven thirty and, and I think, I think that the rollout is, to me, it is a separate issue that how do you provide assistance? I still believe that rollout is something that is separate from island-wide rollback. There are going to be a lot of people who don't want rollout compared to the number of people that say, "I want rollback," I believe, but I, I don't think rollout and rollback need to be tied together. I really don't.
Could I suggest since Joe is going to leave, that we discuss how we're going to pay for it because that's really...
Yeah.
The, the, you know, which, which are the options do we feel like, or else we're gonna, we have twenty-four items on the agenda tonight. We're going to be here awful late if we have to go through that.
Rollback the town, or we agreed the town's going to pay for rollback?
We're not agreed.
No, we're not.
We haven't talked about how to pay for it. We only talked about, you know, David's...
Right now, the town is spending thirty-five thousand a year out of B park to do Ocean Boulevard only rollback.
But we use a B part only because David chose to use that.
Oh, no. Don't put my name on that one. That is a practice adopted long before I got here.
But you could do out of general fund, right?
The Board of Commissioners has wide discretion in how they want fund sanitation.
Yeah, so, but it could be, but it doesn't have to be. It's just that we choose to take out B part money, which is money...
But a certain amount of B part is supposed to be used for tourist-related and why don't we face it that during the season, rollback is tourist-related?
Sure, there's no, I don't have any issues with it coming out of B part.
Well, so... Well, so.
During tourist season.
During tourist season, right. So that was one of the, you know, again, paying for it was one of the, I figured we didn't wanna increase our B part commitment. So we have thirty-five thousand dollars that's being spent currently for a third of that year round. But, so if, does thirty-five thousand B part cover the seasonal rollback and then the rest is paid out of fees? It's the breakdown of how we do it. It's math. It's really math. But I was assuming nobody wanted to spend more than thirty-five thousand out of B part, which is our current commitment.
And just since we're increasing the season, then that thirty-five thousand would be actually more, right?
Well, season has been mid-May until the end of September.
But we're gonna do it twice during the season?
We are doing it twice during the season.
With the, with the recyclables. So would that increase the rollback? The recyclables are gonna go from being every other week to being every week during the season, am I right?
But that'll, yeah.
So would that increase the cost of the thirty-five thousand of the rollback? Because they're gonna have to roll back those cans.
They're gonna have to pay somebody to roll it back, yeah?
I think when David got the estimate.
No, no, I understand the estimate is eighty-five. But what I'm saying, in, in real dollars, the difference, if we, if we do extend the season and do it every week rather than every other week, then the thirty-five thousand figure wouldn't be what you would use to make the difference between the town picking it all up, right? It would be increased by X, whatever that X is.
But we're not talking thirty-five anymore, right? Are we talking eighty-four?
Yes, I'm not being clear. If we, if we continue to do what we're doing, just, just on, we're paying thirty-five thousand. If we now go where we're doing the recyclables every week, that thirty-five thousand has to increase because there's more. So what I'm saying, the difference between the eighty-five thousand, which would take care of everything, is not really fifty thousand. It's not the difference between thirty-five and eighty-five. It's the difference between forty and, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying.
David, the eighty-four, the, the fee they knew, would that include all the things we've talked about, including the, the greens being, uh, or the blues being rolled back?
That's all cans, every pickup. All cans, increased frequency, everything, full cans, empty cans, everything back to the house.
But you're gonna put it out of bid too. That's, that's kind of an initial budget.
By the least we have.
And I, and I didn't say that that was Steve gave me that number.
No, but, but I, I talked to Steve yesterday and he hit me with an interesting thing. I'm not sure who's gonna wanna bin on this kind of a thing because we don't want two days to roll them back. If you wanna roll them back in a couple of, three hours, four hours, you've gotta have a number of people around. You can't do it with one person. You can't get around this island. On Saturday, you cannot get around this island that quickly. So he's looking at having to get a fore tracker to get off the streets, cars or trucks, and have a number of people, you know, to get done in four hours. Yeah. So I don't see a lot of people, other than Steve Mercer, who's, who's got the crew and the access to students and things like that.
Who knows?
You don't know.
If they do, they do.
But what, but.
Okay, but I think.
How do we wanna fund it?
The point is how do we wanna fund it? It's, you know, again, Peter added fee only. I, but my thoughts have been, you know, just throw, B part only. B part pays for everything the whole year. You combine general fund and B part. In other words, there's a town cost increase for it. The town picks it up. Combine the B part and the fees to break even. And that's where I said that.
How do you break even?
Break even is, no, break even. You set your fees so that you break even. It's not, this isn't a moneymaker. It's a, you have to set your fees to break even on the cost of the rollback plus whatever added cost people believe is gonna be needed for, for enforcement. And so, you know, I lay out some options and then Peter said fee only.
So, so the combination though, in my opinion, is, is, if you're gonna do the administration and do the, a fee at any, at any level, you might as well just do all or none because you're already, there's some cost of administering that fee, whether it's half or all is there.
It just occurred to me that if it's a consideration on applying a fee in some shape, form, or fashion, how will non-compliance or non-payment of the fee be handled? When somebody doesn't pay the water bill, I turn the water off. If somebody doesn't pay the rollback bill, whatever that may be, I mean, discontinuing their rollback service, you know, I can see the scenario unfolding. Well, I didn't want the service anyway.
Well, they're not rolling back, so they'd be fifty dollars a day.
Good penalty.
It's in the ordinance.
I think that's.
Well, but they're, but they're, but they choose to do it on their own. They comply with the ordinance and they're rolling it back, but.
Well, it's the same, it's the same as sanitation, right? I, I can choose to bring my trash to the dump myself. But I'm still gonna have to pay whatever the taxes are, so.
Right, there's, there's a disconnect though because you would be contracting for the full month of everybody. And some may choose to pay a fee or not, no, guess.
Well, is, can, can we do it as we, as we spoke about the recyclables? There's no opt-out. We don't have to, we don't have to allow people to opt-out of this service. It's a service that's gonna be put out and this is what it's going to cost. I mean, and, and am I wrong there?
Yeah, the only.
If that, if that's what we choose.
Because the only reason we had for not going down the path of, you can opt-out for the recycle was that then we would be stuck with the, the cans that had been distributed.
But there was, there was a legal basis for somebody to opt-out. What I'm saying here, there's, not to my knowledge, there's no legal basis. If we say this is, this is, this is what the town is going to do, this is what the ordinance requires, and we're going to charge, as I said, I think it's roughly four dollars a month if, if that's the way we go. If it's totally up to the individual homeowner to pay for the fee, it's about four dollars a month.
That's cool.
For the rollback.
I would be more in favor of allowing B part to continue to pay for during season. And then the fee covers the rest of the year. I mean, that's, that's my preference. B part is a legitimate payment method during season.
Okay, but then we would need Mr. Mercer to tell us what the cost of the seasonal rollback is, right? Because he just gave, he just gave us a figure for the entire year.
We would need that to calculate the fees, yes.
Yeah.
We would need, and so it's, we would need that to calculate the fees. And then there's a decision, do you wanna have a flat fee or do you wanna have a graduated fee?
Hold on, I, I think Mr. Mercer, or whoever this eighty-four, eighty-seven dollar, that's the, that's the bill of the town. How we pay for it is totally up to us. Doesn't matter.
But that's what we're trying to do now. Yeah, but I guess we could, I guess we could figure it out this way. If we just said that the, and it would adjust the eighty-five thousand, but for six months, it would be considered the season and six months wouldn't be the season. It would cost the homeowner twenty-four dollars on my rough math, right? Six, six months they'd be paying a four dollar fee and the other six months, the town would be absorbing the four dollar fee. Or property owner.
So it has nothing to do with who's performing. It's still eighty-five thousand. That's, he already told us it's eighty-five thousand. Period. So it's just how we pay for it.
And that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Well, you mentioned eighty before, when you started, but, okay, we're good.
Wanna be corrected that we are all in agreement that we ought to have that service? That we ought not to have the trash cans sitting in the driveway? So why doesn't it just come out of the tax money? The town pays for it. Whether we take some of it out of B part or the general fund, doesn't make any difference.
It's a budget issue.
We pay for it, it's a budget issue. And you don't have to worry about individuals.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing. My understanding as we went into this was that the majority of this board was against using more of our tax dollars and using more of B part for anything. So again, I tried to lay out options so that it was, it was revenue neutral.
And, and my point is, if you're gonna charge a fee of any sort, you, you are already incurring the administration of a fee. So if you're gonna do a fee, do it the whole thing.
You're gonna have to hire somebody else to do it, to pay the fee.
No, doesn't matter who's doing it, how we're paying for it.
Somebody's gonna manage that fee issue.
Exactly. Whether, whether that's covering everything over thirty-five thousand or not. So either all or none on the fees, I think is more.
I think it's either we take it out of taxes or we take it out of B part.
Well, or, or combination. If they want to. But I, I think we.
I don't wanna charge people, you know, twenty-four dollars, you know, for the off-season. I don't wanna do that. Because that means you're gonna charge the people on Ocean Boulevard too.
Everybody, I don't wanna administer, I don't wanna administer for, for just a portion. If you're gonna do the administration and go through the hassles of keeping track of fees, do it for everything. Because they're paying, the, the homeowners are paying for it anyway, no matter where. It's just how they're gonna pay for it, a fee or.
And it's much simpler for.
A tax, and then with the tax, we, we would, where is that coming from?
So as I understand it, the discussion is leaning towards a combined general fund and B part payment to cover rollback for islandwide, year, yearwide, all year. And to stay consistent that we are allocating thirty-five thousand for B part and the rest out of general fund, just to stay B part neutral.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Sounds like a plan.
The town manager, anyone? Do you see any complications?
I'm assuming that there's gonna be follow-on discussion. How about the, the effective date to put this type of program in place? Are, are you talking about, I, I heard fees, but also heard out of the general fund.
Now we're to, it will be B part and general fund will cover the cost. And I, as, we've discussed all year that whatever we do, we wanna have it in place when seasons, when, when we start getting significant activity, which is sort of that beginning to mid-May. So there, there would be general fund budget implications in the ongoing budget year, yes.
Right, so you're looking about six weeks.
Yeah.
And then, and, and that's fine. That gives time to develop the statement of work and put it out for bid and then let it come back. As a, as a precursor to that, in addition to what I stated about all cans, all year round, full, empty, whatever, back to the house, does that capture generally what we're talking about? But it, it needs to be, okay, now that's, that's a different thought I had. Okay, but that's generally what we're talking about.
I would say the statement of work would have to limit the time they have to get the job done.
Well, rollback has to be achieved by six o'clock at night.
So if it's not done by then, then we're not.
And, you know, if, if we have a rollback service and the commissioners, if the decision is we're gonna have islandwide rollback service and the commissioners say, wouldn't it be better if we made it two o'clock in the afternoon instead of six o'clock at night? Because the six, the six o'clock at night was to accommodate people, if we didn't have rollback, that they could come home from work and roll their can back on time. Other towns that have rollback, I have seen that some of them have an earlier in the day rollback deadline because they don't want the new renters coming in and the cans aren't already put back. So, you know, again, it's not too late to say, can we move it up and change the proposed ordinance to an earlier rollback deadline?
Well, I think we could cut that two different ways. In the contract that he's sending out, we could put whatever time we want.
We could.
So, and then for the other, you know, your, your, your scenario, we keep it the same. So that's what I would.
If, if we give islandwide rollback, they're gonna be back. And yeah, the contract, you're right, the contract agreed as we would. Right now, it says six o'clock.
Right, so we could discuss that. I mean, and, and your point is if you come in, what, what time, check-in, three, right?
Theoretically. We have people in our neighborhood, you see them in houses as early as noon nowadays.
Yeah, so, well, but you're not supposed to, but.
But there's also nothing to.
So let's put a three, let's put a three, three o'clock on the contract.
There's nothing to put a pitcher for rolling the cans back themselves. If I was renting a house and the cans hadn't been brought in, I want them back and I'll bring them in. And I'm gonna use them right away.
You're, you're a good citizen.
And I don't come there with a bunch of garbage and throw the garbage can, I hope.
I, my neighborhood people just leave the bins out all week, even after they're emptied. And they, I guess, would rather walk down the driveway with a full can of trash, a full, a full bag of trash and throw it in the bin rather than have it up near the house and just throw it, give it's.
So, so what do you think, contract, three be in, three or a six?
I, I would offer up that the tighter time constraint, the time constraint is that, that's gonna reduce the window. Therefore, it's gonna increase the, the number of people in order to provide the service and the cost may go up. But if, you know, that's always a trade-off on the level of service that you get. I'll offer that up for discussion.
I'm already with six.
I would live where it is.
Six. I'm already with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so for the purposes of this workshop, we've made a decision that there will be whole island rollback every Tuesday. And Saturdays during season, we have the second pickup. And it will be paid for out of B part, staying revenue neutral, and the additional cost being paid out of the general fund.
I would, I would.
Right, no, no, B part revenue neutral.
I would, I would comment that subject to a definitive statement of work and an acceptable cost for your consideration coming back in.
Good.
Yes.
The point is.
We're just discussing.
And that this is what is going to be presented tonight at the meeting.
Good.
Yep, good.
I'm good. I got it.
Do we need, do we need a formal motion here or? No, not for this. We're just, it's a consensus. Yes.
We done that?
You guys still making?
I, I don't have anything else.
Excuse me, hold on, hold on, we have.
I just did a question. Mike addressed it. The shareholders, stakeholders, property manager company, did they give any input?
No, I have received, I, I have not received a single email or note in my box.
Just, I reached out to all the property managers and sent them the link to the proposed ordinance saying this is gonna impact your customers and you probably wanna look at this and give feedback before the ordinance is adopted. So we don't have to, we ha-ha, we have to develop.
They, they may come tonight.
They may come tonight.
Tonight is the night, tonight is when we will vote it. But I haven't received anything, no.
No, we're not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Town got a motion to adjourn, or second?
Second.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
All right. All right.